All right, we'll call the meeting to order. As with all of our committee meetings now, it's being recorded, so, and make sure your mics are on when you speak. You can keep them on all the time, or turn them on and off, either way. Just make sure they're, they're, they're on when you're talking. Thanks for coming to the special meeting we're having. Thank you to the members in the back that showed up today. This is obviously to review the recommendation from, from the committee to the board on Brittany. As we all know, the rumor mill and the assumptions that are out there think that it's already done deal. We're here to say one more time that it is not, and that's why we're here today to make a recommendation to the board. So in your packets, there are a number of, with the number of emails that came in, instead of having, killing a bunch of trees, we decided to just summarize those, and you will see that a high, high percentage of members that voiced some input want to keep Brittany open. So, it was less than, a little less than 2% by the time you put all the ones, the P.O., the emails that came into, to the Bella Vista P.O.A. email address, the ones I've got personally, plus all the petitions, we had probably 350 people sign multiple petitions to keep it open. So, in an overview, that's kind of the status from the input that we've had from the, from the community, which we deeply appreciate. So what we'll do is, we'll just go through, if each committee member wants to give, kind of just a quick synopsis, synopsis of, of what their position is going to be, and then we'll take a vote, and then we'll move on to the repurposing part, or the how to get rounds up part, depending on how the committee votes to then recommend to the board. Mark is not here today, he's on vacation down in Florida where it's 98 degrees, so he sent an email, it's also in your packet, but I'll go ahead and read his email that he sent.
Um, before you go-
Yes, go ahead.
So, I did not assume that in this meeting, there would be a vote of the committee to put forward a recommendation or not. That really needs to be done in our regular committee meeting next week. I believe.
Legality?
You could do it at either, because you have a quorum here, you could technically do it at either. I think originally, the contemplation was, was not to take a vote today, and you could take a vote, but to take a vote at the regular meeting, but you could do either simply because you have the majority, you have a quorum of the golf committee. Whatever you'd like to do, in other words.
We could put the draft together and officially vote on it the next meeting, that would be fine. We can do that. Thank you, Susan. Mark's email, after reviewing all the input, and I don't have my readers on, so, "After reviewing all the input from the community, it is my recommendation to keep Brittany open. I would like to add that we look at an eight-month period to compare rounds and revenue of the last two years. If the rounds and revenues do not meet or exceed previous years, then we need to explore closing Brittany. We can try different ideas to increase the rounds, but the cost to maintain our golf courses and amenities continue to increase with inflation. This is a consequence of not raising assessments and revenue to keep pace with inflation." Bella Vista's a unique community that offers incredible golf courses and amenities at one of the lowest prices in the country. If we don't, as a committee, choose to increase our dues or assessments, we will continue to have, have to make hard sacrifices, it's taking away the main reasons we chose Bella Vista to live in. We all love Bella Vista and want to keep this place beautiful, the week, oh, keep, sorry, keep it beautiful, the place we call home. So that was, that was Mark. So on the same lines, Mary, would you like to start?
I am in favor of keeping it open, for several reasons. First, it would eliminate the, it's a nine-hole course that we can keep, and it doesn't flood. The possibility of, especially after this weather we've had this year, the possibility of losing Burksdale just adds more credence to keeping it open. Plus, I think it's a family-friendly course.
Good, thank you. Dean?
I want to say, I was really impressed with the turnout at the meeting, and the passion people had for golf. And I think if we don't vote to keep it open, we've lost a lot of integrity when we tell people that no decision's been made. I was really impressed with the way people came out. I think we need to go forward, we need to develop some forward tees, so it's a little easier course, because it's not an easy course. Par fours are 400 yards, or nearing it, par threes are 133 yards, or number nine is. I don't know how many people can reach that. We need to get rid of the men and women designation on the tee, tee colors, you know, go white and red, or whatever, don't call them men's and women's. I think marketing, I don't have a lot of ideas, but I've seen quite a few good ideas, how to market it. I had some good, some good ideas about prices, you know, I think maybe a yearly membership on just Brittany, might not be a bad idea. And I don't know what that is, somebody at the meeting, I think, suggested $500, and I'm not sure if that's not a little steep. But you know, if that's the only course they're gonna play, if, if that gets more use out there. Well, a little research I did on executive courses and things like that, I, I found the putt-putt courses are the ones that are actually going up, and those are shorter courses yet. Those are courses that are 100 yards or 80 yards, as long as they have, they're all par threes. So I don't know whether you can combine something like that. I think we go out there and look at the tee boxes, and where we could easily establish, some of them you won't be able to, but many of them you will, be able to establish a more reasonable tee box, so people can have more fun. It's a wonderful place to take your grandkids. I think it's worth, worth investing and developing a strategy to increase play and to market it, and to go forward, with nothing held over their heads about if you don't increase, you know, just go forward with a positive attitude. That's my two cents.
Okay, thanks Dean, good. Steve?
I too was amazed and impressed with all the member turnout and the input, collecting all those surveys or, or signatures to put on the petitions, just fabulous. People I talked to, basically from the very beginning of the conversation, were to keep it open. In the questions, you know, what's the goal? Was it about the money? $46,000 out of a $2.2 million golf subsidy is like just hitting out of bounds, a triple bogey. Was the goal about land use? And it seems to also raise the question, because, you know, there's at least 200 members out there who bought specifically for golf front property. The course is used, and if, when Burksdale floods, and if the plan continues to be to close the other nine holes, I would assume that there's gonna be a lot more usage out there at Burksdale. So, or out at Brittany. So, based on all those reasons, I'm proud to vote with the members to keep Brittany open. And I hope the issue is solved, and really see no reason to bring it up in the future, pending those other events. On the marketing side, I've also heard great ideas, don't really have the time to reiterate them, or speak specifically to any of them, but what I would suggest to our marketing department is to create lists between the members and non-members when they do these email blasts. For example, you know, the message to each group is qualitatively different. So for example, with Brittany, a person, a member with a photo ID can play for $13, but if the message is going out, it costs 20, well, that's a substantial difference. And then lastly, on a personal note, I wanted to thank the golf committee for all of its insights, support, due diligence, and determination for trying to keep our courses. We're on the same team, and I'm glad to have been a part of us. And as you know, I was elected to the Board of Directors, and so I'm stepping off the committee at May's end, and I wish you all the best of success, and look forward to hearing more from y'all.
Thanks, Steve. Mr. Phil?
I also agree that the response from the community was, let's just say, overwhelming. I think the consensus of opinions were well-received. I appreciate the work that Jason and somebody, probably Tammy, has done to do all the typing, and to put this stuff together. This is a great course for those who want to practice on the course, techniques, short game, and/or sometimes long game, depending on which hole you're on. The other thing is, it's a great place for the children to learn how to play, maybe First Tee can move out there and do some work. The other thing that I really, really feel strongly about is, should it be closed? We only have one nine-hole course that may not exist in a few years from now if we have floods. So, why make a decision to close something that will never flood? Keep it open, I think we would get tremendous support from the residents to keep it open and move forward. There are lots of marketing ideas, such as tournaments, kids' tournaments, all-in-the-family type tournaments, that we could put out there and increase rounds and revenue and usage of a very good little course. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Susan?
I also agree we should keep it open, for a while anyway, really because of the community support. Okay? I am going, it, my thoughts, though, are not without reservation, okay? When I look at this from several perspectives, there's some things that I think need to be said, and we often don't say these things, okay? The first thing is, it's easy to say that $48,000 is pocket change or a small percentage. Reality is, though, it's a lot easier to spend money than it is to save it, and right now, we're looking to save money, because of the fire. If, if this were any other year, it, this probably wouldn't even gotten noticed, okay? So, the money is important. The other thing is, from the financial analysis that was done, there's, there's a fair number, even though it's a small analysis, there are some assumptions there that may or may not be realized. You know, one is that 80% of the revenue will transfer, okay? So, when I listen to the folks that were talking, you know, the ones that play the most are the groups out there, and there are about three groups that play. And at least the two groups that represent the women's groups indicated they probably would not transfer to Burksdale, because playing Brittany doesn't compare to playing another 18-hole course. Playing, playing Brittany compares to having coffee, going for a walk, and other non-golf activities for most people, okay? It's quick, it's easy, it's fun, and it's close, and you don't have to wait. So it does fill a niche market that we don't fill with our other courses. So, so that transfer may not happen, and that changes the dynamics. But what we also didn't consider was what happens if we see another 20% decrease, or 30% decrease this year, and next year, and what that does from a cost perspective. All of a sudden, our, relative costs are much higher, okay? And, I mean, it's a stark reminder that our golf business is decreasing, okay? We're losing golfers, and we're losing golfers at a higher rate than we're losing rounds and revenue. So, it's a little concerning. However, however, I mean, there were so many people that were positive about it, and I'm, my hope is that that enthusiasm translates into play, and it needs to translate into play for members who do not currently have an annual pass, okay? It doesn't do us any real good for people with an annual pass to play their 111th round at Brittany, okay? So our target market really is the neighborhood there, because people play it because it's close. Nobody drives from the Highlands out to play Brittany. It, it's close, it's inexpensive, it's fun, it helps, it can hone your skills, even though some of us think it's not much fun, because our skills are not very good. It, it is, it has a niche in our, our market, and I think that it's a way that we can engage in some low-cost, local marketing, because I don't believe the market for this course is in Bentonville, because they have nine-hole courses in Bentonville, okay? But it, it's really for us, focused primarily on Central and East Side, if we care to split it that far, and usually we would not. And, first of all, remind people that it's there, because we forget sometimes that our population changes every seven years. You know, we're so used to playing with the same people all the time, that we forget that there are a lot of people that move in and out, and they may not know that it's there. So, primarily email kinds of things, and just see if we can reverse the trend, okay? I agree with Mark, in his comments, that I believe that come November, we should really take a hard look at the results, okay? Because what I would not want to do is go through the winter, take care of the greens, you know, baby the course the whole winter, when nobody plays it, right, to come around at the beginning of next season and say, "Let's close it," right, when there's the same information available in November, okay? And I'm not, in fact, I mean, but I think at some point, we're gonna have to look at the hard truths of things. I hope that doesn't come for a long time. I also don't think that the flooding, the Burksdale to Brittany transition is particularly meaningful either. I think that if Burksdale closes, and then they will transfer to Kingswood, or Country Club before they will go, or Dogwood, before they will transfer to Brittany. Good. So that's my two cents.
I am also of the opinion to keep it open, and, and I will back most other committee members' comments on the involvement from the community, and the vocal, and the enthusiasm, and the emotion. There's been some great ideas, some fabulous input, but some, some ideas on some things we can do, some of them mentioned around this table, Dean said, you know, some pips, or I like to call them Mary's tees, the planned forward tees. I say, I don't say because she plays them, I say because she's, she's, she's very excited about them. So, looking at, you know, the longer holes there, and, you know, look at maybe some more family-type activities out there, both, so, you know, my, my sway is to keep it open as well. So, thanks, everybody, for, for your, your individual thoughts. So on that, let's, let's look at, since we're gonna, we're gonna table a vote till the actual golf committee, but now that we have a consensus of keep it open, let's look at how to increase rounds, and maybe come up with five that we can put in the recommendation to the board. Yes, Mary?
I would love to see us offer a family pass. If we're trying to get our grandkids and our sons and daughters, the younger members that we have living here in Bella Vista, it needs to reflect that. And an annual pass would be fine for an individual, but family pass would be much more effective for this course.
That's a good one. That one was brought up quite a bit at the input meeting, too. Yeah, okay? Yeah, perfect.
Seems like years ago, when I had grandkids, I was playing with them in Kansas City or something, and sometimes you would call a course, and if they were junior, they could play free, basically, on some of the courses if they were coming with an adult.
I kind of spearheaded the junior program behind the board, and Ruth, and everybody was on the board back in the day, and we have not raised the fees in the last seven years. It is $9 green fees for junior to play 18 holes. If they ride, they gotta pay for cart fees, just like everywhere else, is what it goes. So we've kept that, and everything else has gone up, so, just to let you know, our junior program's growing, our camps have been full every year, and our junior league program's growing. We do have the Kids First Program, not many people wear it, it is on the website, the board approved this. If you have an annual membership, and you want to buy the First Kids Program, it's $100 for the year, and anybody that comes in under the age of 18 plays for free, as long as you there, and it's a heck of a deal. If you have a photo ID, it's just 200 for the year, it's not per child. So we have buy-ins from grandparents that had, that know they have the kids for a week, so they will buy their card for 100 bucks, their annual golfers, and the kids come down, they come out for that week, and they play. And it's a heck of a deal, it's after 12 o'clock, it's not during prime time. And the reason why is just because we have so many golf groups, and we make sure our members are looked after first.
Sort of along the same lines as Mary, maybe we could come up with a plan where people that don't have a annual, but they have grandkids come in town, so we could, we could work up something where they can come out and play at a reasonable price, but it's a wonderful place to take grandkids, and, and the main reason is because you don't plug up an 18-hole course. You know, you take grandkids, you take an eight-year-old out that hasn't played much golf, and you're trying to introduce them to the game, and you're digging on the Country Club, you know, you, you spend all day letting people go through.
So, so me, on this, on the last couple of years, Jason's been part of the Gravett, he's assistant coach at the Gravett High School, and my son plays on it, and we actually had our tryouts at Brittany, for the same reason, doesn't slow everybody down, so we utilized that golf course out there.
And ranked days.
And, and it's, it's been a pretty ranked days and stuff like that, so the juniors know it. First Tee has moved, so just so everyone's aware, First Tee is in Lowell, they have a big facility donated by them, lots of money invested by Tyson's Foods, they won't come back. I have visited with First Tee over the last six months, even the facility down here at Tanya Creek, that top portion, we are taking over for our junior programs. They've got no interest coming back down here, because our programs have started to grow, so, they had, they were the main ones that did it in the past, our camps and everything, that's kind of dissipated, and now they're down in Lowell, and we're doing our own camps with all the pros we have on board now. So we're working on our own programs. Does that help?
Thank you. So First Tee has moved officially, okay? I was gonna ask that question. Okay, so family pass?
Well, and, and kind of following up on Dean's comments, and a lot of, we got quite a few of the grandkid comments, that maybe as far as a package goes of some sort, even a limited-time package, you know, for two weeks, or whatever, because a lot of times the kids just come for a couple of weeks, and, you know, you want to take them out three or four times, maybe, right? But not the whole year, right? And the, I don't know if the pricing would be that much different, but again, maybe it's not a whole year thing, but maybe for a block of, of time.
Or maybe an individual punch card, sort of like we did on the TV ad, only just, it'd be just for Brittany, and, you know, a parent or a grandparent and a child could go out and get two punches, be just good for Brittany.
Good?
Jason, could we have some sort of, like an all-in-the-family tournament, played there, just for nine holes, instead of tying up an 18-hole course? The glow-in-the-dark thing at Highlands was a success, it was nine holes, we could have that out there as well.
What's the tur, the terrain? Because, I mean, we, we put, we put the glow-in-the-dark on the back nine of Highlands for, because it's-
For a reason. I understand that.
And, and actually, that came up at the community meeting, and I wrote it down, and I hadn't played Brittany since the high school kids, I went out and had a look, and it would be unsafe.
For glow?
Yes, for the glow-in-the-dark. It's really not so much, well, first of all, the golf balls, you see where they go, so you know it's on the house and stuff, like we had at Highlands.
Yes.
But it's the actual driving of the golf course, crossing the roads.
Correct.
That, that was our main deal. So we, we picked Highlands back nine, there's no roads crossings, everything's kind of quiet out there, that's why we did it, and why it wasn't a success.
And I had several glow-in-the-dark balls in my yard.
That's right, I do remember.
The next morning, people were picking them up and looking at them, like, "What are these things? They don't look like golf balls."
It wasn't mine, Phil, I didn't play.
Ah, no.
So a family tournament, so I, I wonder, on that family part of it, I'm kind of bringing the grandkid thing into it. I wonder how many, or, not only a family, obviously includes grandparents, grandkids, fathers, mothers, and all that, but I wonder if you did a grandparent, grandkid type of thing as well, and not even be more specific on it.
Well, I think you could do with residents and kids in Bella Vista, have a family tournament type thing, not just grandkids, because, you know, mine are here only for a few days, and they don't play golf yet. But if you get the people who live here to have a family tournament out there, on a regular basis maybe, maybe once every two months, or something like that would help.
Susan, does the Friends of Dogwood, is that, are they also friends of Brittany? Okay, I didn't know how, how far out you-
Well, and I, I was thinking, we're, we're getting ready to start planning for our tournament, which is Labor Day, okay, which we need to talk about, but I was thinking, you know, we might be able to just add a nine-hole tournament at Brittany the same day.
Sidebar, why don't you make it a 27-hole fun event, something unique? You, you the committee on that, but just sidebar.
Yeah. But do something to engage, to bring Brittany into the picture on that.
Can it be used as a shotgun?
For what?
Just a nine-hole shotgun? Maybe, or a men's scramble, women's scramble?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Those are just parts of the tournament idea?
Do our twilight fees apply out there? Might be a good idea, twilight fees, you might have some people that work, it's a four-letter word, I realize, but that might want to come out and get, because that's one thing good, but you, unique about that golf course, it doesn't take four hours to play it. If you're out there and you're really serious about it, and you're by yourself, in your car, you can get around there easily in less than an hour, unless you run into a bunch of people, which is one of the problems we're having, you don't run into anybody, but, I mean, it's, it's a course that plays faster.
Yeah.
So it might be something, you could, you could market some twilight fees out there, it might get some, a little more traffic late in the afternoon. I don't know about August and September, but-
Right. One of the things that I, that came up a few times in some conversations and emails I had, was the, you couldn't have eighteen-hole groups do it, because you, there's just no way to do that, but the other nine-hole groups that don't play out there, asking them, begging them to add that to their rotation would be helpful, I don't know if you, I'm sure you've already had that conversation with them.
We did.
What was the response?
We did.
Got it.
It, it's not particularly positive, and I, I belong to two nine-hole groups, and I, and they, in general, they don't feel like they get enough golf out of playing there, right? That if they're only playing nine holes, you know, a week, or for this thing, they don't get enough golf, it doesn't feel like it's long enough. And then it's, with one of my groups, it's the terrain. But some of the things that Dean suggested about changing the tee boxes, where you, you know, kind of tee off from over the ditch, potentially could make a difference on some of that.
Good.
And, and kind of, I know it's a little out of scope, but I was looking in several of them, I mean, for the nine-hole women's, we play at Burksdale quite a bit, for another nine-hole group, we have Burksdale in our rotation one time, and you kind of wonder, hmm, how'd that come about? Why wasn't it more?
Two of our, two of our courses don't end themselves very well, the nine-hole courses, do they? Dogwood and, and Kingswood, you know, sort of, I know they play out there some, but it's sort of clumsy when they all come driving back against the, the flow of golfers, you know, because they've, they've played their nine holes, and they're all coming in.
We play Kingswood quite a bit, and we basically tee off on one in 10, is, is how it works. And it works out very well, and it keeps us there for just a couple of hours, and not four hours.
What about from a marketing, pure marketing perspective, some- What about from a marketing, pure marketing perspective, some sort of name game campaign type of thing? Off the top of my head, Cutest Little Course in Bella Vista or something. I don't know what to do, but something like that.
We did get one letter, her name I don't...
You can put whatever you like.
Yeah. Oh, but we did get one letter from a member that had...
What was this little gem?
Quite a bit, quite a few suggestions. Actually, she had quite a, quite a good list of marketing suggestions. And I think that in general, we need to trust our professional marketing team to decide what they need to do on that.
Yeah, and I won't take credit for that. That was from Ms. Heather's email, for sure. I don't remember all the names she had.
Yeah, but she had quite a few. I was impressed with her list, actually.
That's better. Better than Cutest Little Golf Course in Bella Vista. So we'll get with Kim on putting something like that, that can go in the email blast and things of that nature that highlight a little bit more.
And when we talk about the email blast, we need to make sure we advertise it not just in the golfing email, but more importantly, in the general one. Because people who are in this target may in fact not be on the golf list yet, because they may not play regularly, so they don't get the golfing email.
And I would reiterate that we want to make sure it doesn't differ prices in that email blast. That was one, thirty-seven dollars, election non-member, thirty-one for us.
Right.
That's another reason, keep it open, we won't, we've got courses that someone can play for less than forty-one dollars.
Yep.
If they're a member. And I think that's, that's important. We have alternatives for people that want to go out and play.
On that note, is there, do you feel like we should recommend any pricing structure changes? Up, down, keep the same, other than the Family Passes, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, the Family Passes need to be, my idea of the family, for the Family Pass, was to hit the people that aren't normally playing golf. And that's so they can bring the mom and dad, and two sons, or whatever, and daughter, or whatever. So you make it family-friendly, especially on the weekends when they're not working, or after five at night when they're not working. And they can bring the family out and enjoy two hours. It's a nice walk. It would be fun for them. So the pricing needs to be geared for those people. Get more of them involved, they're going to play golf a lot longer, so.
What is the status of junior clubs out there, Darryl? Are there any available for rent or for free, or could that be a campaign we could do to get a couple sets of junior clubs?
We don't have any. We've actually got ones donated from various of our membership to our junior program, and our programs have moved to Highlands because of the range out there and everything, and that's where we rotate it. So I'll get with Alex, and we can probably put a couple sets together. Not full sets, but a driver, utility wood, wedge, and a putter.
Well, and I know they're obviously not the best clubs, but a beginning golfer doesn't really care. But I know at the high school, I mean, there's a cage full of clubs that have been donated that we never use, so we could maybe get over and get a couple sets.
What about possibly our Dogwood Tournament? Part of the proceeds from that could go to buy some, from some equipment for kids.
I'll put it on the list. And also, kind of following up on what Mary said, for Family Pass, I think we don't, when we think family, we don't necessarily need to think parents and children. Because more and more, what I'm seeing, I've known several women here who have followed their adult children to this area. And so it may be a way to, again, with a Family Pass of some sort, you know, get them and the kids that they came with and their kids, right? So when we think family, I wouldn't be thinking what we would consider a nuclear family.
Right.
Right.
You know, as I think about that course, I'm not so sure we couldn't have, make just a par-three tournament out there. On the par-fours, the four par-fours I think there are out there, you could probably establish a par-three tee on all four of those, and then you could have a par-three tournament, and people wouldn't have to carry a whole set of golf clubs out there. And maybe a lot of people don't want to play those four. They're pretty challenging holes, particularly seven and eight are very challenging holes, and very, very challenging holes, I should say. But, and anyway, I think, you know, maybe you could establish a par-three tournament. Wouldn't have to play it all the time, but if you want to have a par-three tournament?
Something unique and different.
That'd be a quick tournament in the evening, maybe, for one of our evening tournaments. You know, you could have a par-three tournament, and then meet back at the clubhouse with brots and birders or something, you know, something like, might be a good idea, do something like that. And just have the par-three, and then you don't have to worry about the par-fours, it's where people are losing the balls and slowing down play. So that might be an idea.
Turn it into the pasture golf that I used to have in my house. Wedges and wedges only, or wedges and putters.
Are there any other changes to the course? I mean, we're talking marketing, but are there any other changes to the course that we should think about?
The only other one, sorry, Dean, the only other one that came up a couple times, and Keith, I definitely want you to address this, because we had this in the regular committee meeting, was larger holes. And we know that that, although it sounds like a great idea from a maintenance perspective, not necessarily the best, the best solution.
Problem with those eight-inch cups is we would, we could move them like once a week, maybe. They're very hard to move and then get level. And those greens are so small, I think we would have to keep them in the same place for a long period of time. Now that being said, in the summer months, that might not be an issue. Winter months, when that grass goes dormant, that might be a bigger issue. So maybe if we do something like that, we would, we would try it in June, July, August timeframe first, because they're very difficult to move. If you've ever come out and tried to change a regular cup and then try one of those, it's, it's difficult to get dug out, and it's difficult to get it back level.
My way in on that, and I've actually just got back from kind of a big meeting with about fifty-one PGA members, employees, and we were visiting about the big holes, and is it successful? Ninety-nine percent of them said no. One, from a maintenance standpoint, and two, from the hole, you can miss a big hole as well. And one of the pros turned around and said, well, why haven't they made big holes and putt-putt courses? You know, they've kept them all the same. And I'm like, that's a good point. So they have found that it hasn't been working. They've tried it, they've tried events, and they've just moved, don't mind one hole on a par-five, to give people an ego opportunity, something like that that's unique. But to leave it up all the time, it hasn't brought any extra rounds in or anything at most of their golf courses. I'm talking from California to Florida.
That's useful.
Dean, were you... Dean, did you have something? Okay, sorry.
One other thing that I think was mentioned several times, and it's, I think, following up on what Dean said, is doing a, you know, golf and, you know, golf and social event. Because now that we have food there and beer and wine, that's a reasonable possibility, where before it really wasn't.
With doing some of those, I know, it's the Friends of Dogwood, right? That's, okay. I know ours is Friends of Highlands. Would that be something the Friends of Dogwood would do, or would, would it be worth getting a couple people around that course to form a Friends of Brittany?
I don't, well, I think that for Friends of Dogwood, it's probably not realistic based on the size of, I'm hoping with so much enthusiasm, maybe we can get some more people active.
Right.
Okay. But I think if it was kept fairly straightforward and didn't have a lot of competition and scoring and yada, that the golf shop itself could handle, you know, something like that.
Would it be worth approaching some people and to be, start a Friends of Brittany?
If you, if you have people who want to be Friends of Brittany?
Or call it whatever.
We would really love to have them as the whole group, because it's very difficult to get active people in these groups.
Just brainstorming, I don't know what, it has anything to do, or it's relevant or not, but there's a lot of pitch and putt activities I see going on, you know, with, a lot of times with juniors and also with other people too. And I don't know whether you could work up a pitch and putt activity out there. I was thinking about holding a contest on like number one, closest to the pin type thing, or you could do a pitching contest, or maybe you could have several different skills contests as you go around the course. Maybe it would be close to the pin on number one, and pitch on a different hole and something else like that. That's just, that's just reaching and...
Yeah, why not a drive-putt and chip contest for kids, like they do at the Masters, you know? If we could have our own little, pick a Saturday or something.
Yeah, Pinnacle hosted, in fact, they've just, it's gone to First Tee, had hosted it this year, but the past five years has been at Pinnacle, to time to the LPGA. That's when they hosted it. But we could, we could mimic...
We could do our own, though, I mean, just...
We could mimic that and encourage the juniors to come out and try, and then they can go to the sectional, which would be at one of the, that's a good idea.
You might, you might design something called Target Golf, which is different flags at different distances, and have a contest to see who can get the best shot on those targets. Just take a couple of holes and maybe on the par-fours, you'd have something that would be short, and something would be long, just as an alternative to chip and putt.
Yes, definitely is a fair idea.
What I can, if you'd like, what I'll do, I can do, is take this and kind of categorize it and club it together. And I think that we'll get a shorter working list for next week.
Yep, I like it.
Because they fall into about three or four categories.
Right.
One other comment is on some of the marketing, especially the basic, just branding kind of thing. I think it's important that we get started soon, because summer is here, and especially there may be some extra enthusiasm as soon as Brittany and Dogwood reopen, that we might have an opportunity to get attention, and it's fresh in people's minds.
I'd like to see us, like Mark said, too, again, in November. Somehow measure this. If we're going to start these programs, we need to track. We have to have some kind of tracking to see how much we've increased, how many people are coming back, how many maybe non-golfing families come out, or whatever, so that we have some way to track a lot of this.
As long as we factor in the impact of the fire and having to close Brittany for an extended period, we just need to make sure that we factor that in.
Take them off the May out.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So do we want to prepare the draft now, or do we want to do it at the next meeting, or do it now and then next meeting vote on it? Or how do we want to, I have down to prepare the draft now, but we can...
Well, I think that in general, since everybody, I think, is, we have a consensus to keep it open.
Yeah.
Right? So there's no, a lot of argument there. The one question would be, you know, is there a, would we suggest that there be a review in the fall or not? You know, some people said yes, some people said no. Yes, I agree. I think it's too early. It's going to take us a while to get any of these things implemented, so.
I just want to add to that, golf's a big plane. To get it going, you've got to implement early, market, go along. You can't make spot changes on the fly. So as, on a golf operating standpoint, give suggestions, let's look at it, let's work it into the budget, let's work in staffing, because I've got to look at that as well. Make plans, prep it out, and then look through, as that plane starts to take off, and see how we're doing. If we're not getting high enough, then you make the little changes. But right now, I'm asking, just give me some time, get my staff together. Paul out there is dynamic. Give him some ideas, see what he can do on that aspect, and we'll go from there.
Can't we just draft a normal, just a regular proposal, that we are recommending that Brittany stay open at this point in time?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll draft it and send it to everybody via email. When, if you can compile those, get those to me, and then I'll do, it's going to be a short three-liner, you know? And then we'll put that on there so everybody has, they can read through it, and on their own time until next meeting, and then our regularly scheduled meeting, well, our regularly rescheduled meeting, next Wednesday, then we can go through it in detail if any changes, and vote.
Yeah. And on the, on the list, I don't know that we need to necessarily trim it down too much, kind of along the same line, to give Darryl...
Categorize them, yeah.
Yeah, his staff sometimes think what's feasible, what's not feasible, what marketing works and doesn't work, and that kind of thing, so.
Yep. Good.
Jason, can we ask for any comments from the...
Yes, does anybody, yeah, we sure can. We got some time, sure. Does anybody have any comments?
I am not a golfer, okay? I have been told not to golf, you know? After breaking the window of my commanding officer, I was ordered not to golf. So I don't golf. But what I do see, I fish, and the problem I've seen is, like, you go to state parks now, they don't, and you want to rent a boat, it doesn't cost, it's not cheap anymore. They've gone to high-end boats where it costs like sixty dollars an hour. So you alienate and disenfranchise the people who can't afford other things. Don't get in the idea of pricing out other people when you, when you think about how to effectively cover your costs. Because you're going to end up, you'll end up increasing your fees up here, which is only a small amount of people that can afford it, while disenfranchising the rest of the group down here. I think, once, and I've seen this, I spent twenty years in the service, going around to bases where they keep closing things and closing things, and they don't reopen again. They're gone. And there's nothing there left for the people to do. And you lose them. So once you close something, it's gone. It won't come back again. So really consider that when you make decisions on it, you know?
Yep, thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. I'm just sitting there not planning on talking, but number fifteen, I just wanted to expand a little bit. My husband and I don't golf, but I loved that idea of a wine and dine, or night and dine. If it could be like a date night, my husband and I don't own anything for golfing, we have no idea what we're doing. If there could be like a ten-minute session to teach us what the clubs even are, and spend some time together, we would absolutely love that. I know so many families on my street that we'd bring that would love that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank the committee for doing a good job. You listen to the community. You're to be applauded for that.
Thank you.
I live on the golf course. We enjoy it very much. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
You're welcome. So, would you want to be the chairman of the Brittany and Friends?
He's running away.
Thank you for that. I was just asking. Even after he gave us a compliment, look at me, go.
Never stops selling.
I know, right? Never stops selling.
Jason, if you get the wine and dine group, they might be friends.
I like them. Wine and nine. Wine and nine.
At the bottom of your glass is a sticker, and if it says one, two, or three, depends on what, yeah, I like it. Yes.
Yeah, I can answer. We do, we do have contracts. In fact, Highlands is the home of Gravett, Lifeway, and Bentonville West. Bentonville plays out of Bella Vista Country Club and Kingswood. Brittany's not long enough, it's not graded long enough to have a full event on it for the kids, and not ranked enough. So, we just used it for ranking days, because it was quiet out there. But we do have contracts, and we, we support the junior high schools in the afternoons.
What about the sixth-grade elementary level?
Most high schools do not have a golf program for that age in this area at all. It starts in ninth grade, high school golf. We do, and that's where we do our junior programs. We do junior PGA league, and that's all accommodated for the kids. It gets them ready for the high schools to take over. The junior schools don't.
Wouldn't it be a benefit to, at that age, because most of your best golfers started even younger than that?
We... We do, man. We have our junior camps. We go to Bentonville Boys and Girls Club up here. We promote, and we grow golf. We go to Coopers. We actually had a Cooper Golf Day and Tennis Day scheduled. It got rained out. But that's what we do. We promote them. We encourage them. We put a putting green up at the Boys and Girls Club, just up the road, donated from our APT tour that we have out here. So, we encouraging junior golf, and our pros are working at it, and trying to grow them up to play golf.
So, that it? Anything else? Anything from the back? Ruth? Mary? No.
Well, I was going to say, but I think Daryl was covering it. There's nothing else about education for kids, or even adults.
What'd you say last time?
An intro to golf and dine, for people who don't play golf, and they come out and see what it's all about. And then they dine afterwards, and then see if they want to come back another day for playing and dining.
Golf and a movie?
You got to learn, I mean, you got to learn someplace. I know you have the starter programs, et cetera, but this is a way that come out one night to see what it's all about. And when they try to hit it twenty-four times, and it's a struggle, maybe they're going to find out, wine and dine is much better.
Do the wine in first, and then we'll be okay.
For the adults. For the adults.
I don't think I do.
You good, Daryl? Mary, anything else? Nope, do you know?
Nothing.
Okay, Steve? Good. You're welcome. Phil?
No, thank you.
Ms. Susan?
I'm good.
Mr. Tom? Good, all right. We will reconvene on our rescheduled, regularly scheduled meeting next Wednesday, and I will get the draft of a recommendation out to everyone on the committee, and Susan's going to compile these.
How about that tomorrow for you?
Tomorrow, you'll have it by tomorrow. How about that? Meeting adjourned. Thanks.
Just email to me, can you do that? Yeah, that'd be great.